I'm going to bring to order the October 15th regularly scheduled Board meeting of the Richland 2 Board of Trustees. If I can please have a motion to go into executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to recess public session and convene the executive session for the purpose of a discussion of student appeals, student admission requests to the district's adult education program, and a contractual matter regarding operations and construction.
Motion's been made by Dr. Caution Parker. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have a hand vote, please. All right, motion passes 7-0. We'll now convene to executive session. I'm going to reconvene the October 15th, 2019 regularly scheduled Board meeting for the Richland 2 Board of Trustees where we just returned from executive session to discuss the items that were mentioned in the motion. At this time, we will do the inspirational moment and the Pledge of Allegiance. For tonight, we will have a moment of silence for our inspirational moment if we can all please just take that moment now. I'll now have a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
I move to remove item 10.3 as needed items discussed in executive session from the agenda and approve the agenda.
So approve the agenda with item 10.3 removed. Can I have a second?
Seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
Just to explain the reason why I'm requesting this, this is an item that is just put in here, we were talking about it a couple of weeks ago, that has been put in as a fail-safe. I have confidence in those that are writing the agenda that they can thoughtfully check over the agenda and ensure the items that are included in executive session are also included on the agenda for our vote. Most importantly, in my opinion, there's a perception of lack of transparency if we don't have those items included on our agenda, and that's why I'm making this motion. Thank you.
Absolutely. Just for clarity, I do want to say that we cannot vote on anything that wasn't mentioned as part of executive session. That would just be a fail-safe in the event that there was a vote necessary within the items discussed. So I understand your issue, but I just want to make sure that I'm clear on that component of it. Is there any other discussion? With that, we'll have the vote. We will now move on to our special recognitions. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Chair, members of the Board. We have Ms. Libby Ruth before us this evening to share with us the special recognitions for the October 15th, Richland School District 2 Board of Trustees Board Meeting. Ms. Ruth.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, Chairman Manning, and Board members, community members, parents, and everyone who's joined us. Thank you for being here. I'm happy to present you with tonight's special recognitions. Begin with two of our middle school students. We have two students from Kelly Mill Middle School, Avery Pegram and Savannah Yo, who have been recognized for statewide economics poster contests. I believe Avery is with us. Avery, if you want to come on forward with your Assistant Principal, Jamila Kinley. Savannah's mom emailed us just a few hours ago and said she had an incubator event going on and too much homework. So she was going to put, that's her priority tonight, but we're glad Avery could join us. You want to step up front, Avery? I always love it when we can share their work. Avery and Savannah were winners in the Color the Concepts poster contest held by South Carolina Economics. South Carolina Economics is a nonprofit business education partnership dedicated to providing teachers with continuing education in economics and personal finance. The drawings created by Avery and Savannah were among the 16 illustrations chosen for the 2020-2021 Color the Concepts poster for South Carolina. As you see on the screen, the two young ladies selected two of the six possible concepts for their focus: goods and services for Savannah and opportunity costs with Avery's. Students in grades K through 8 are challenged with illustrating one of the concepts which are outlined in the South Carolina Social Studies Standards. They were recognized at awards ceremony in May where they received $25, and their teacher also received $25 for their winning. Congratulations and keep up the great work. And I am the photographer tonight. One, two, three. Sticking with our economics theme tonight, will Amanda Stickelbauer from Blythewood High School please come forward along with Assistant Principal Jo Hawkins? And Hayden! Hi Hayden! Thank you for joining us! Each year, she's very proud, Hayden, I know you are very proud of your mom, and let me tell you why. The Council for Economic Education, which is a national organization, recognizes a high school educator with the John Morton Excellence in the Teaching of Economics Award. This award promotes excellence in economic education by honoring inspirational teachers whose innovative teaching concepts improve and stimulate economic understanding in and out of their classrooms and achieve results. To be eligible for the award, nominees must demonstrate how they integrate economics into their teaching and include a sample lesson that has been used in their class within this last three years. This national award reflects how Ms. Stickelbauer's excellence makes a difference and exemplifies how the importance of economic and financial education is so critical to our students' future success. She was honored earlier this month at the 58th Annual Financial Literacy and Economic Education Conference in Los Angeles where she received a $1,000 cash award. Congratulations, we are so proud of you. And that concludes tonight's recognitions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. As they say, cash is always good, right?
Oh, yeah.
So next, I'll have the approval of our consent agenda. If I can have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mackey.
I move approval of our consent agenda.
Okay, Ms. Mackey has made the motion to approve our consent agenda. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll take the vote at this time. We will now move on to item 7, School Focus. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Chair, and members of the Board. This evening for our School Focus, we have the Center for Knowledge, and we have Ms. Jessica Agee, who's coming before us this afternoon, this evening for the presentation. Ms. Agee?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Manning, good members of the School Board, and Dr. Davis. I am so excited tonight to share with you how we are fulfilling our new school motto of "Two campuses and one school." Some of you may know that the original CFK is about 21 years old now, and CFK North was established about seven years ago as a replication of the program. I've had the great pleasure of being a part of this program for 12 years, and I'm excited to share with you how we are working innovatively to develop a culture of success across two campuses. While I had the great joy of going up and down I-77 regularly between both campuses, I absolutely could not do it without our phenomenal leadership team. I'd like to recognize Mr. Harold Johnson, who is the lead teacher at the Center for Knowledge North. Yes, absolutely. And Ms. Jessica Holly, who is the lead teacher at the Center for Knowledge. While they stay stationary at each campus throughout the day, they spend countless hours on the phone discussing, making sure that we're in line, and doing similar things across campuses, including, what are we wearing tonight to the board meeting? Are we going to match? So sometimes I laugh when I walk in on those conversations. Again, the importance of that is that they're both committed to developing the culture of our program. Additionally, we are really fortunate to have a shared literacy coach, Ms. Lori Clark, who's able to join us here tonight. That has been instrumental in helping us build fidelity as we develop our curriculum and help move our students in the right direction. Not, I could not forget our related arts team, art, music, and PE. And today, Ms. Camille Stack, who is our music teacher at both CFK and CFK North, is here to join us. As you know, for a lot of children, especially in the elementary level, the related arts program is a huge part of what they believe and walk away with, and this allows them to have shared experiences regardless of whether or not they're at the Center for Knowledge campus or the North campus. This year, we've been fortunate to have a school counselor that we can also share between both campuses. She was unable to be here with us tonight, but she's been able to help us start social groups and use resources across both campuses to support the social and developmental needs of our students. Being 12 miles apart can create some unique challenges for planning. As you can imagine, how we provide planning time for teachers is a hot topic. It gets a little bit more challenging when everybody's not under the same roof. So our first grade team, although there are two teachers at CFK and two at CFK North, they really function as one academic team. So we have to be very strategic and intentional about how we use our time. Every week, teachers have dedicated time for planning on Mondays, with the exception of the first Monday of the month. That's the one opportunity we have to bring everybody together under one roof. So we really have to maximize how we use that time in order to create professional development that allows us to build capacity and support the fidelity of our program. When teachers meet weekly with one another, they have a set agenda that we give them guidelines. Here are some of the goals we want you to work on together. But really, the power is in the numbers of the talent that comes to the table across both campuses. If we were to limit them to just working with one other teammate, we would certainly reduce their productivity and their ability to create engaging lessons. Our motto is that we are sisters, not twins. So in that sort of a unique thing we try and stick to. Each campus has a little bit of a different feel, and if you've visited CFK and CFK North, you feel that as soon as you walk on the campus. They're both uniquely special, but it is also important that they're allowed to have somewhat of their own identity. Just geographically, being in a suburb versus being out in the rural part of North, not North Carolina, we're not that far out, the northern part of the district in Blythewood, it does have a different feel, and so we work really hard that even though we're sisters, not twins, we want to be related, we want to have things that are similar, but the expectation is never that we're cookie cutter, but that our goals and our expectations are the same for students, and we hold ourselves accountable for that. Our leadership team has weekly meetings. These are really important, and even though we're spread across campuses, we work really hard to do those virtually. We have a set agenda every week that focuses on our three core areas for the year. This year, it happens to be fidelity, MTSS support, and feedback, and so every time we meet, we're having conversations around those goals so that we can be in line with the needs of the school. I could say the word fidelity a million times. That's something our staff is really familiar about with, and that's a big goal for us. One of the things that we realized that was holding us back in the last two years since I became director is that CFK had established a mascot of a falcon 21 years ago, and CFK North established a mascot of the North Stars seven years ago. Neither school was strongly tied to their mascot, and we thought this was a small symbol and a small opportunity for us to show that we're really a united front. So we gave our fifth graders an opportunity to brainstorm. If we could have any mascot, what would you want it to be? They came up with a 13-slide presentation of 13 different animals that ranged from an African wild dog to a pygmy elephant to a leopard, and they had legit reasons why that was important and why that encompasses being across two campuses. The trend across all the animals was that they were adaptive and flexible, and that's one of the things that we know we have to be. And so the school then voted, and the leopard won. So we were really excited to begin this year with a shared mascot of the CFK leopard. Our very, Marcus from the Communications Department helped us design our logo, and we are in the process of rebranding and enjoying being one faculty. Additionally, we have a lot of volunteers and parents who are supportive of our program, and we realized that we were having PTA meeting after PTA meeting after committee meeting after committee meeting. And as you all know, it's harder and harder to find volunteers who have time available to help, and we thought, how can we work smarter and align those resources? And although our PTA still functions separately, we still have two presidents, we still have two treasurers, fundraising goes to each school separately, but we come together and meet monthly so that we can align our resources and say, hey. You know, the presidents are often on a text message and say, I sent an email reminding my group about this meeting, did you do this? And they sort of sync up, and it allows us to be incredibly efficient and far more effective. In fact, instead of meeting for about three hours the first Monday of every month, we're meeting for about an hour because we just have more people and more capacity to do the work we want to do. Our faculty committees and work teams are also across campus. So when we look at a team to develop a new piece of curriculum, our curriculum in particular is core knowledge, so we have a harsh committee that looks at how are we incorporating core knowledge across the curriculum? We have committee members from both campuses. That's a critical part of how we move forward. And again, we can be sisters, we don't necessarily have to be twins, but everybody has a voice at the table. We are so excited that just this past week, we had our first ever combined event with both campuses and all of our families. We were gracious enough to be able to use the field at Eilright Middle School, and we had a food truck rodeo fall festival. We had seven different food trucks, we had over 500 people attend, and we only have 264 kids at each campus. So when you add that up, that's a lot of people, a lot of families. And what was amazing to watch is the families interact who knew each other from dance or church or soccer teams or Little League baseball, and they were excited to spend time together with their friends. And it was no longer a CFK event or a CFK North event, it was just a school event that everybody was focused on building relationships. We're also planning for the first ever Leopard Ball this year, so in order to be more inclusive, we're moving away from the father-daughter and mother-son dances that have been done in the past, and we want an opportunity for families just to get together, have fellowship, and continue to build and nurture those relationships. Our Field Day, that was one of the things we've been able to do together in the past. This year, it gets a little bit more unique as CFK North is under construction, but we're working on a plan to be able to combine that as well. And we have aligned our overnight field studies for 4th and 5th grades so that they're now on the same calendar, so the 4th graders and 5th graders from each campus go at the same time. So in order to strengthen those relationships, they are spending three days together, and then they're coming back and they're working using all the technology we have to do reflective pieces and presentations based on their learning, even though they're not under the same roof, which I think prepares them for the future. A lot of us are doing work together, and we're not always housed in the same building. We couldn't do this without relationships. There is no staff from CFK or staff from CFK North. We work together, even for Mr. Johnson and Ms. Holly. While they're stationary at one campus, they both have unique skill sets that they bring to the table so that our teachers know, if I have a question about benchmark testing and how to interpret that data, who do I go to? I know that if I have a question about how to respond to a period email, who has a strength that I can go to? So we don't limit them to just going to the administrator that's on their campus. We really work together as a team, often affectionately calling ourselves the Amber Stans. So we just say that every decision we make is together. The same with hiring. When I have an open position at CFK North, I do not limit the team who's involved in the hiring process to the teachers at CFK North. We pull in teachers from CFK because the expectation is we're one team working across two campuses. So we really are trying hard to embody this new motto of "Two campuses, but one school."
Board members, questions or comments?
...in the relationship and knowing the importance of a relationship, so thank you for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Other Board members? Ms. Mackey?
I just wanted to just a little tidbit, and yeah, thank you for your presentation and for sharing with us, but I love the fact that you all share. I like seeing you all go live and you broadcast when you're doing things at school and all. It's kind of a fun thing for both of the campuses, but thank you for your presentation. You can feel the warm and fuzzy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you. We will now move on to public participation. We will start with Minister Mustafa. Just remember, I'll give you the short, we record these, they do go on YouTube, you have three minutes, and make sure you push the red button. There you go.
Chairman, thank you very much.
Yes.
I'm here because of the fact that in our community, we are very disturbed in regards to what we have heard and found out. We want to know, as I look at your policy, your security policy, your board agenda, et cetera, there's nothing in there say that employees should be carrying guns. Nothing in this text that at all, Chairman, that employees should be carrying guns. If we're correct, the law enforcement are the one who's secure for the schools, the law enforcement. That's why we have them, okay? For employees to carry guns, one, what if something happened? Who's liable? I have three grandchildren and three sons that's in Richland 2, okay? We have problems already with police officers in regards to their misconduct. They at least get training, they at least get training, and they need more training. But this particular issue, we don't recall coming into, on the agenda, to the board so the community can be involved with it. We have a problem with that. Another issue we have is the taser that took place with the officer. Now, why would an officer tase children that's fighting? What is the board going to do about it? What policy you going to put in place? That's what we want to know, because no officer should be tasing children because they're fighting, none whatsoever. We have some, you know, we begin to question the leadership that we have. We don't work for you guys. You guys work for us, and it's the children that is the number one concern, the children that's number one concern. Now, in September 2016, the incident happened with the Spring Valley young lady who got assaulted by an officer. The board took no action whatsoever. The action that the board took that we felt was totally incorrect. The young ladies went to jail. The young ladies went to jail for, we concerned for doing nothing whatsoever. And that particular officer who done that has been doing that to our children for three, four years, from my understanding. So we want effective leadership, is what we want, effective leadership. And rush on and say this right here, are the children, all the children in Richland 2, are they career-ready? Are they on grade level? When they graduate, are they prepared to go to college? Can they read and write? We want to know these things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mustafa. Next on our agenda, we have Ms. Kristin McGuire. Good evening.
I'm here tonight as a parent, teacher, and voter. Last year, a pilot program was put in place to compensate teachers for planning time lost when covering classes when classes were not picked up by a substitute. Those who were either willing to give up their planning time or answered the call from a very desperate sub-coordinator were finally going to be compensated $15 per class that they covered during their planning time. What a boost for morale and a nice incentive for teacher retention this was. The communal thought was, hey, it's not much, but at least finally people understand that our planning time is valuable. This year, scores of teachers were dismayed to learn that this program had been halted. Our search for answers as to why was met with that the paperwork was just too difficult to keep up with, so we put the program on hold. How is this possible? With dozens, possibly hundreds, of people in the district office, how can we not find a way to put a priority on compensating teachers for their lost planning time? We figure out how to pay people for tutoring hours, we figure out how to pay people for home-based hours, how can we not figure out how to pay teachers for classroom coverage? In the minds of many, being a premier district means high graduation rates, test scores, and a good state report card, but I would argue that it also means insisting on premier practices intended to retain good teachers. As a parent, and more importantly, a foster parent, I want my children's teachers to spend their planning time delving into the curriculum and choosing instructional strategies that allow them to meet my child's unique and diverse needs, especially my foster child who has an IEP. As a teacher, I value that time to review data, look at standards, adjust pacing, contact parents, tutor students who have a study hall that period, and enter grades for the classes that I teach. As a voter dedicated to the improvement of public education in this county and throughout the entire state of South Carolina, I ask that you invest in our teachers, even if neighboring districts are not. I implore you to quickly find a way to reinstate this program. If substitute shortages dictate that we cannot protect our planning time, please protect the value by compensating my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McGuire. Next, I have Carlos Milan. Mr. Milan, if you'll push the button to make sure it lights up red on the, there you go. Thank you.
Dear distinguished Board members, please allow me a few minutes to talk about the need for revamping the way the district teaches Spanish at the district level. I am here as a parent advocating for my child, a 9th grader at Blythewood High, and for all those students that will come after her. My daughter is currently doing Spanish II honors at Blythewood High. Her Spanish class is okay for someone who knows the language, but it is not okay for those needing an opportunity to actually practice and expand on their knowledge. I found out through my own inquiries that Richland 2 does not have a formal language department coordinator at the district level. There seems to be a lead Spanish teacher somewhere, but the organizational structure of how Spanish teachers are selected is not clear. A current concern at Blythewood High is that, in the meantime, there is no current Spanish textbook for my daughter. She only uses worksheets and written notes that only review the most elemental, basic facts of her Spanish. According to the South Carolina Standard for World Language Proficiency, my daughter is still covering the interpersonal strand of the standard, but is nowhere near practicing her skills in the interpretive and presentational strands, which in effect are the areas needed to take off into language proficiency. The reason for my visit today is that currently at Blythewood High, my daughter is being taught by a non-native Spanish speaker. I have reservations about the effectiveness of having students and my daughter learn the language from her source that has a characteristic accent and which is not clearly spoken with authenticity. To try and address this issue and put it in perspective for the Board, I will try to underscore how important authenticity is. Personally, having learned English at around age 12 in Belize, I became immersed in a new culture and language, and I can remember to my great chagrin that even the most basic English words I had learned were all wrong. I had been exposed to wrong pronunciation. I actually learned English by being the only Spanish speaker in a room full of English-speaking kids. Back in the day, my personal experience to learning English had no name. Today, it is called immersion. There were no support systems like ESL or ESOL, you were simply put in a classroom and you assimilated. Today, after much research, there are several methods that have been proven effective in order to teach second language acquisition. The natural approach is one of them. Listening is also another important aspect. Basically, the reason why I'm here is that I am trying to ask and advocate for my daughter to try and have a native Spanish speaker, teacher. There are native Spanish speakers, Spanish-speaking teachers at Blythewood High, but they are not teaching these important classes over here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Milan. If I can have Ms. Angela Vanderlei?
I'm speaking with you today on behalf of a group of Richland 2 parents, each of whom emailed you earlier today, but not... each of whom emailed you earlier today, but not all could be here this evening. Uh, as we emailed, we are responding to policy proposal GBEB staff conduct as discussed in the school board meeting on September 24th, 2019. First, we adamantly oppose granting any teacher or any district staff at schools within Richland 2 the authority to possess a firearm on school campuses. Civilians with firearms can delay law enforcement. They can put law enforcement in danger. And most importantly, they can pose a risk to innocent bystanders, including our students. Law enforcement officers do not know who the good guy is versus the bad guy when civilians start shooting. However, based on the current South Carolina state law, we conditionally support the policy proposal GBEB staff conduct, which clarifies the district superintendent to be the school official who has authority to authorize district personnel to possess a weapon on district property if the following conditions are specified in board policy. One, no district personnel will be authorized to possess a firearm on district property without the authorized personnel having and maintaining current law enforcement certification and up-to-date law enforcement training. And two, any potential district personnel authorized to possess a firearm on district property shall receive annual mental health screening, the results of which will be available to the superintendent in order to potentially continue having the authority to possess a weapon on district property. And three, any district personnel authorized to possess a firearm on district property shall store the firearm or firearms unloaded in a locked safe when not in direct possession by the authorized district personnel. Four, Richland 2 school board members, Richland County Sheriff's Department, and the district civil liability insurance company shall be notified of the district personnel who are authorized to possess a weapon. And five, the only district staff positions which the superintendent may authorize to possess a firearm on district property are the Director of Emergency Services and Assistant Director of Emergency Services. We hope that you take these conditions into consideration in this policy proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next on the agenda, I have Chris Haas.
Good evening. I want to take a moment to speak about one of the policies that are up, is up tonight. It's IMB Teaching About Controversial and Sensitive Issues, something that I engage in each and every day in my classroom. So, there are a couple of things on here that I feel like concern me. But I, to be honest, I'm not absolutely positive. I had a nice discussion with Helen Grant beforehand. And I'm still not super comfortable, but I still want to discuss some things. So, it's this idea of we, emotional criticism and the promotion of a cause within the classroom are inappropriate. But that's a very vague statement, promotion of a cause, because there's a lot of causes we're standing up for in your classroom. Pushing on beyond that is this idea of guarding against giving our personal opinions on sectarian political questions or any other controversial issues. So, I know in our classrooms, ultimately, what we want to do is to teach our kids to be critical thinkers. We want them to fixate new beliefs through inquiry, not through authority, because someone has told them it's true, not because they want it to be, to believe it's true, or just because it makes sense to them, because they actually engage in some process of inquiry and push that forward and test that against many different things. We want our kids to also learn to engage in discussion, rich discussion, with the diversity of people, with the diversity of thought, where they seek out people whose lived experiences speak firsthand as primary resources to the issues at hand. This helps our kids become informed. It helps them become civically engaged and ultimately to stand up for what they believe in. But my concern is, as a teacher, we have to lead by example. And there's always going to be topics where you have to put your feet in and stand up for what it is you believe in. If I say that I want my kids to learn to accept, to appreciate, and to love all people for exactly who they are, regardless of their race, their ethnicity, their religion, their sexual orientation, and their gender identification, that is a political statement, and there's people who will disagree with that vehemently. But I have a moral obligation in my classroom to show my children exactly who I am and exactly what sort of world that we need to live in. If my kids come in, of which one did today, and says, I saw in a news article that someone else was shot in Texas, and they want to have a discussion about how that happened, and somewhere in all this, someone says, well, my parents said it's because she was black. And we have a discussion about that, and we weigh all these sorts of things, and I'm trying to stay on the fence. Ultimately, kids need to understand that you cannot grow up in a society and not hold on to implicit biases that make you, it put you in a position to make snap judgments where you see a black woman in a window differently than you see a white woman in a window. So, I guess my main concern is, in trying to remain neutral on so many things, I think we risk sending a message to our kids that somehow being a spectator is an ethical response to an injustice. And I think we can all agree that there are times to take a stand. The disagreement comes in where that line is between what's appropriate and what's not appropriate. And my concern about this policy is there's a lot of vagueness in it, and a lot of people don't do this work because they're afraid to. And they assume that they can't, although I must say this district's made huge strides lately to push people to do that.
Chris, I'm sorry to cut you off. It's three minutes.
I don't know the solution is, because I don't know how to rewrite it. I wish I had more time to think about it, but it just worries me a lot. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much. No, I'm sorry. I want to maintain our three-minute window there for, uh, for those discussions. So, that concludes those who have signed up for our public session. We will now move on in the agenda to the legislative update. Dr. Davis, Dr. Miley.
Dr. Miley. Thank you. I wanted to give you a brief update on a couple of items that are going through the legislature right now that could ultimately impact local school districts, particularly Richland School District 2. There's one is a new funding model that's been proposed. It's been worked on for about a year. Frank Rainwater was take, had taken the lead. He's the director of the Department of Fiscal and Revenue and Fiscal Affairs. He used to be the old Budget and Control Board. And his staff, they've been working on it for about a year. They've included, they've gotten a lot of input. To their credit, they've gotten a lot of input from, from organizations like School Boards Association, SCASA, our business school organization, and local districts, and gotten a lot of positive impact. But it's really a funding model that assumes that the status quo is good now. That is, the allocation of funding, there's no increase in funding proposed. It's basically just reshuffling the money, another way of allocating the money. It's based on a pupil-driven basis, which drives the number of teachers. And the funding model is basically funded by, is, it directs funding by the number of teachers that a district would have. We think it's a little bit simplistic. We also think that, uh, right now, the model would, is not complete. There are a lot of funding sources that they did not include. They've actually admitted that the difficulty in allocating funds for special, special education departments is very difficult, and they basically punted on that section of the model. So, and they know that that needs more, more work. But right now, the first run of the model would short us by about $6 million. And right now, there's no formal, official discussion on the funding mechanism that would allow those dollars to be made up. Frequently, when you're talking about a state system and changing a model allocation system, you talk about a whole harmless clause in which, oh, if this is, if you don't get as much money as you got last year, here's an extra pot of money that will hold you harmless, and you will not feel any pain. There's no discussion about that right now. The first estimate would be in the $173 million range. But there's no discussion about how that would be done and where those funds would come from. It's still preliminary, but it's on the horizon. It's been driven by the governor, the Speaker of the House, and the President of the Senate. But we think that this is a model that may get more traction once it's completed. But we just wanted to make you aware of that discussion that's going on at the State House. And if you, we, it's not that we're opposed to the model right now. It's, uh, the model that we're working on, that we actually get funded on right now is the may, is basically the Education Finance Act, which is 40 years old. It needs some retweaking. We're not positive that this is the right way to do it. But we've been, been working with Frank to try to make sure that at least he has the correct data and the understanding from the school's perspective. The second one is a little bit scarier. The bill that is introduced in the Senate, it's the Senate Bill S555. I don't know how many of you are familiar with some of the tuition tax credit proposals that have been put forth in the legislature over the last 10 years or so. But it's basically creating scholarships and tax credits that people can give money to. They get tax credits for their income taxes, and then those monies are paid out to scholarship winners to go to private schools. There's a current law right now for tax credit for special needs students, but it's capped. That is, the amount of tax credit, the amount of loss for tax revenue is capped at $25 million. The proposed bill has no cap. And the same Frank Rainwater, who is in charge of doing fiscal impact analyses on any proposed bill, has estimated that if this bill were passed, the loss of revenues to public school districts would be $227 million next year. The following year, it would be $457 million. Loss of public funds that currently go to public school systems and school districts that would be going to private schools. We've actually, I've worked with the School Board Association, fighting these, uh, these tax credit proposals over the last 10 or 15 years. This one has not passed, but it's one that we thought that you might be, want to be aware of. And if any discussion, I'll be glad to answer any other questions if you have them. But it's obviously a way to defund public education by sounding like you're giving nice tax credits to folks. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Board members, questions or comments?
Just a question.
Ms. Mackey, then, Mr. Shad.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and for the insight. And I've heard some rumor, some murmurings, but do we know where Molly Spearman stands on each of these? Or is she?
I have not heard her say anything.
Okay. Okay. Just asking, because I know that was, has, would be where the push would come from. So, just curious. Thank you so much.
The tax credit proposals have been pushed for the last 10 or 15 years by outside groups that aren't even in South Carolina. It's big, big, big money.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Shad?
Thank you.
I feel the same way.
Other board members? Yeah, I think when it comes to the funding model, you know, I've heard a few comments. One is, um, there's no proposal for new revenue. So, basically, we're just reshuffling the deck, taking the same amount, redistributing those funds. It creates winners and losers in the school system. And I know several of these models actually have Richland 2 losing a fair amount of money. And we have some districts that actually have a much higher value on their bill that would potentially gain in some of these where we would, uh, we would lose. And, um, I know I heard a smart person, smart man say, and it wasn't me, because I'm not that smart, but that eventually the legislature would redo it, so they can't say they underfund education anymore. So, if they redo the model, then they can, we can no longer come at them and say, you haven't funded your own formula, which is what they've been doing for years. So, um, essentially, we have two bills in front of us that will actually, uh, most likely hurt education in the state of South Carolina. At some point, they have to really look at revenue streams. We give more tax breaks than we bring in in the state. So, there needs to be a rework there. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to also thank Dr. Miley for, um, giving us a summation of this. We've all had an opportunity to sit and listen to Mr. Rainwater's proposal and presentation as relates to possible funding. I agree and have stated publicly that, um, this is an opportunity for, um, for the legislators in the state to say that they are funding public education by reworking the model. No money or additional monies have not been infused into public education. It's the same amount of money, just reshuffled. We do see some of our very large districts within our state who has a tax base. I think that is, that surpasses Richland 2's tax bases, will actually be receiving money. But we also have districts who potentially could be losing $50 million to their budget. We are not as unfortunate as, as that district would be, but still $6 million to our budget could have some significant impact to our school district in the long run. And so, we're always being vigilant and diligent into kind of forecasting where we're going to be over the next couple of years if something like this should, something like this should pass. I think it's important, as you look at these two policies, to educate, for our public to educate themselves on that. And I think many of our teachers have, and employees along with our board has done some, some, some in-depth study of this, and will continue to have conversations on behalf of the students and teachers of Richland School District 2 and the state as relates to our thoughts and preferences to the funding model. But I think it should sink in to everyone, if you did not quite hear exactly what Dr. Miley was saying, $500 million is what we're possibly looking at in year two of this. $500 million, a half a billion dollars potentially could be leaving public education and being reallocated or diverted to other, to private schools and sources who have an opportunity to pick and select who they will educate and how they will educate them, when we do not have the same luxuries and latitudes to do so. So, do not allow something to rest, let this simply rest as one of those things, because $500 million is a lot of money, and that's just a projection in year two. Have no idea where we'll be in year three, year four, or year five, and how something like this can impact our school district. But I, I also feel for those school districts that are not in the fiscal positions that a district like Richland 2 was, is in. And, and those of us that have the ability to stand up and speak up regardless of this, I think is our obligation and responsibility to do so on their behalf. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Dr. Holmes?
Um, yes. I think it's important to know what Dr. Miley said. The companies that want to do this are not even from South Carolina. This is big business. It's not about educating the children of South Carolina in a better fashion. It's about allowing other people to come in and make profit off of our, our South Carolina school system. Now, we can write letters for everything else, but we need to be writing letters to our legislative body. We need to be vocal about this, because this is the type of thing that will reduce any kind of gains that we have made in education, because you're talking about, what, you said $500 million? That's ridiculous. So, as we sit here, we have got to get more politically active when it comes to putting our legislators on spot. Because one of the things I keep hearing in South Carolina, and I keep telling people that I don't think that is true, they like to say that teachers don't vote. Teachers don't have any political voice. And I say, well, where did you all get this from? They said they've taken a poll. And I say, well, no, I've been in education 30 something years, and no one has ever polled me. And I go vote every single time there is a vote. So, I don't know whether, I think that that's a general one-line thing that they say, because they don't want to give you the respect as educators that we deserve. We have got to put our foot in the water. We have got to be politically active. We have to, because if not, they're going to give this kind of money to these, their friends and these outside agencies that are coming in here and are going to make big money off of our school system. So, I urge everyone to write your letters, make your voice clear, use your social media, and tell them that this is something that we do not want to happen. I plan to do so, and I hope you will follow suit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey.
Just a point of interest. For the Senate Bill 556, there are no, there are no Richland County senators who've signed on to that. All of the senators who've signed on to it, like the nine or 10, are all from the upper state, from very rich tax-based districts. And this, the legislators that I know, their children are not in public school who've signed on to that. So, when we're thinking about that, making sure that our local, our local delegation is aware of these things, because oftentimes, they look to us and ask what our, what our position is on such matters. So, if they're not signed on to the bill, um, does this mean that you're probably not officially a part of that? So, just make sure that your Richland County delegation is aware of that, because they've not signed on to this, which is a good thing. But just a point of interest.
Ms. Shad?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank Dr. Miley for this summation. I was holding my tongue, but since my colleagues are going there, I'll follow suit. This is absolutely an assault on public education. We've known about it for years. It's coming. It's coming. It is here. This is merely taking public funds to fund private schools, which, which obviously are not under any type of regulation by the state in who they choose. I'll go out, perhaps on a limb, and say, this could very well be... Well, let me not go there. Let me not go there. We just, if they get to, if they get the funding and they get to decide and pick and choose winners and losers in terms of the children and getting these scholarships with public funds, by the way, without regulations like the school districts obviously have, then what type of children are we going to have prepared for, um, this economy? And who gets that funding? And who loses the funding? And I will just read the last paragraph that you gave to us. "If passed, these levels of lost state funding to local districts would be extremely challenging to manage and would result in either reductions in programs and teachers or increased local taxes, or both." We can't sit on the sidelines anymore. In addition to writing letters, we need, I would encourage folks to show up. They will respond to the good noise that you all, I hope you all will, will make. Let's join together and see if we can push this back again. Thank you.
Thank you. Other board members? All right. Dr. Molly, thank you for the grim news.
He's good at that.
You're just a good messenger, not gonna take you down. All right, we now have voting on executive session items. If I can have a motion on student appeals?
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, can we back up? Let's do 10 dot one, admission request into the district's adult education program.
And I was gonna do 10 dot one, I didn't pay attention to what you called. But, Mr. Chair.
Glad, in this case, you.
I have it in my right order. I'd like to make the motion to approve the admission for student number one and student number two into our adult education program.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes seven zero. If I can now have a motion for student appeals, item 10 dot two.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
We're going to separate these. And for student number one, I'd like to make the motion to deny the appeal and uphold the district's recommendation.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. And is there any discussion? No discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes five to two. Ms. Agostini?
Mr. Chair, for student number two, I'd like to deny the appeal and uphold the district's recommendation.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? No discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes five to two. Ms. Agostini?
Mr. Chair, for student number two, I'd like to deny the appeal and uphold the district's recommendation.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? No discussion, we'll have the vote. We'll now move on to item 11, old business, no action requested. Item 11 dot one, Dr. Davis.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have before you, again, old business, no action requested. We're bringing back the proposed policy of EEAG, Student Transportation in Private Vehicles, which will be followed by policy 11, policy GBEB, Staff Conduct. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Dr. Davis, and members of the board. As you remember, as Dr. Davis mentioned, we brought this policy back. It's gone to our Parent Advisory Council and our Faculty Advisory Council. Summary from the, both of those councils was in your board brief that you received, basically saying, understanding the liability issues with that and with the concerns with those changes, we can see the changes on your screen that we recommended. Basically, the big thing to see here is that we do not recommend or encourage employees to use their private vehicles to transport students, only if it says essential, and it marks out those there. But also, the big thing, or the first bullet point there is written parental permission is obtained. So even if it is an essentialist instance, the written permissional, parental permission is still obtained. I'll answer any other questions that you all may have.
Board members?
I just, I have a comment. I just want to say thank you so much for taking this to the Parent Advisory and Faculty Advisory Committee. I'm very pleased with this, so thank you, Dr. Davis, and all that worked on this.
Ms. Dr. Holmes?
As a former cheerleading coach who used to have to take kids home, I appreciate the changes that we made in this policy.
Other comments? Okay. Next policy.
Good evening, Chair. Ms. Anderson and I will stand before you to present the Staff Conduct Policy, GBEB. You also received a memo dated September 25th that provided additional information from the last board meeting.
All right, board members, questions or comments? Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Thank you so much for the additional information that I requested on our last meeting. I still have a concern about the weapons policy, and later, I will make a motion that we just have that completely removed, where no employee is allowed to carry a weapon on school grounds. When we think about the safety of our students, and especially our African-American men, it gravely concerns me that if we put weapons in the hands of someone who does not have the diversity training, or who knows how to work well with our students, especially our African-American males, we could really place ourselves in a major lawsuit. So I want to go back to the fact that in school districts, no weapons should be allowed or carried on school property. So I would like for that to also be enforced with our employees, that we do not allow any employee. Therefore, we can remove having the superintendent to make this call, or even having the board to make it, because we're removing it altogether. Once again, I'm going to state, we have to, taking consideration, the folks who are carrying weapons, do they have the training, the necessary training, to interact with our students when they're out of order, out of conduct? And I believe that answer is no. I don't think we need to have weapons on our grounds, and we'll talk about that, and I would like to make a motion. Or, can I make my motion now?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Holmes, if you'd like to make the motion, be specific about what you want, but make the motion now.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we remove that, what we add, that no school employee is allowed to carry weapons on school property.
So I think, and I hear you say you want to add, but we have an item that's contradictory to that, so do you want to remove what's in parentheses, where it says unless otherwise authorized? If we did that?
Yes, I want to remove that, and just have it, where no employee of Richland School District Two will be allowed to carry weapons on school grounds or properties or school-sponsored events.
All right. So if I'm understanding, if we remove what's in parentheses, then leaving the rest of it would effectively do what you've asked?
Yes.
Okay. So we want to remove unless otherwise authorized by law on the superintendent?
Right.
So that's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? Ms. Agostini?
Thank you, Dr. Elkins, for making that motion. I am not completely opposed to having guns on campus or in our district, but I think that we do not have enough information, like was presented today during public participation. There needs to be a lot more criteria than just, say, and the superintendent. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Mackey?
Yeah, just a question. What, which, which information are we still looking for? Just with your comment, you said we don't have enough information? Just went.
To do protocol procedures, step by step, of if they're going to be permitted, what is the criteria for us to grant somebody the permission to carry a gun?
Okay. Ms. Shad?
I know the focus is on guns, but when it says possessing weapons, does that mean, I don't know if we call it shop anymore, but someone has a box cutter, who's a teacher, cutting boxes, whatever, for class, but it can be seen as a weapon? Are we including that as well, or are we only talking about just guns?
From a district standpoint, we look at anything that is considered a weapon, which could be a knife, or blade, or anything as such that could cause harm.
But that's if the blade is like a certain length, right?
That is correct.
Right, less than four inches.
I see what you're saying, because I think we define weapons for students in a way that sometimes scissors and other kind of basic things can be considered weapons. So, I can understand that.
But not in the hands of an adult, apparently. So I just want us to be mindful of that. But regardless, if the administration could share with us, if this motion passes, does that impact the employment potentially of anyone who may have that concern?
No, sir. It would not impact, impact the employment of any current personnel in our school district. Yes, sir.
And a point of clarification, just for the public, we, there's only two individuals who have, are required to have, who have a weapon, and they are authorized by law, and they have the approval of the superintendent currently. So we, just a point of clarification, there's not a, lots of employees with weapons in our campus. There are two district employees that have weapons on our campus. Thank you.
Excuse me, did I hear you say they were required to wear?
Not authorized by law. I'm sorry if I misspoke. They're the, they're not required by law, they're authorized by law to do it.
And they're the only two that you are aware that actually have those weapons on the district?
That's.
That you are aware of, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
And I was going to add to Mr. Anderson's comment, that's too, too many. And especially when the board was not even aware that they carried a weapon. I've been on this board for seven years, and I've been through three superintendents. And this is the first time I've ever had knowledge of it. And I also reached out to prior board members, and they had no knowledge that we even allowed those two to carry. So once again, I just think that's too, too many. And are we ready, is the district ready for the liability that can come out of this? And I would ask that it cease immediately, that no employee that's employed by Richland School District Two carry weapons. If we want them to carry weapons, then they should be a part of the SRO team who have the permission to carry weapons. Thank you.
Ms. Shad?
Ms. Chair, and this is really just, I guess I'm just speaking, but it's sort of ironic that the only reason it's come to our attention as a board is because the administration is actually wanting to put an extra layer of protection. Well, it is true, because I looked back, and it looks like this was last revised when all of us was on the board, on August 14, 2018, it was there then, in terms of if it was authorized by law, by the law, that was in there. That, as far as I recall, that didn't come up. This, this kind of discussion didn't come up. And I don't know if it was added in then, I doubt it, but it, then it was, it apparently was on the books for seven years before that, because it was revised again on October of 2011. I presume that language was in there as well. And so, we probably have had people already possessing guns. Thankfully, we have not had any issue, but, but, you know, apparently, the administration said, hey, we know we have this, we know of two, and we probably have had it before, we just didn't necessarily know, but we didn't even have our superintendent to approve it. And it looks like the administration is saying, at least, let's have this extra layer. But I do understand Dr. Elkins saying, hey, let's just remove, well, let's put, let's just do a blanket one, and just say, if you possess a weapon on school, on a district, then that's misconduct.
Dr. Davis?
Yeah, I think that the atmosphere that I feel from the board, and I could be misspeaking for the board members, and I surely am not trying to do that or persuade a board member to vote either way for or against this policy. But the, what I feel is that, I know I can say from my perspective, that I support the position of, of the board, of course, in any position that the board takes, but I don't think it's a bad decision if you remove this policy, or that section of that policy altogether, for the sakes of safety, first, for our students, and liability concerns, secondly, for our district, should something should, should happen. But I do want to state publicly that in my, in our attempt to be transparent, and in our attempt to also ensure that there is an extra layer, that's why this was brought up, authorizing and clearly stating in policy, not leading, leaving it ambiguous to just school personnel making the decision, but giving that personnel an actual title, which that title would have been the superintendent to approve this policy. Based on what Dr. Elkins Johnson asked from our previous board meeting, we provided for the board some historical context, and as you can see, this practice has dated back to as early as 2003, far exceeding many of our times here on this board. We were just trying to put some sort of protocols and some sort of safety measures in place by ensuring that this was, that a process was documented and properly followed, and ensuring that if there were individuals that were authorized to carry, and I want to emphasize that these individuals did not openly carry these firearms that were authorized, but they did have the authorization to do so. But they were not walking around school campuses on a day-to-day basis with firearms, which is probably why many of the board members did not know that they had this, this ability to do so. But I think everything that was stated earlier from our public, as well as the lead from our board on this, I think is in line with administration, of course, will support that 100%, and we will make sure that we have the additional protocol, additional safety measures in place, should we have an emergency that takes place on our campuses. And the board has already allowed us to do many of those things, because I don't want that to be lost either, because the board did approve for us to re, the board did support the administration's reassignment of our security force to our elementary schools. The board is on board with providing funding for our resource officers at other schools. And so, we have many safety protocols and procedures in place to ensure that there is an adult who is in charge of the safety of students on our school grounds outside of our school administration. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Elkins Johnson, do you still want to comment?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment back to what Dr. Davis said. It was brought to my attention with the firearms through an anonymous letter. I was not aware, and some of the other board members were not aware, that we had two employees that were allowed to carry a weapon until we received that anonymous letter. So I'm not sure what they're talking about, but I know that I was not made aware of employees carrying weapons until we receive an anonymous letter. And I'm going to say to the public, continue to send anonymous letters if you feel uncomfortable saying who you are, because a lot of times, we don't find out things until the last minute, or we don't know things until you guys actually tell us. So I'm one, and I'm only speaking for myself, I'm one board member who respects your anonymous letters, and if you are uncomfortable identifying yourself, feel free to send your letters to me, because I take every letter, whether you write your name on it, or you choose not to, very seriously. And I want to thank that person who sent anonymous letters, because if you had not sent that to us, I, as a board member, and many others, would not have been made aware of the firearm. And then I'm going to go back to, I know Dr. Davis talked about a practice of Richland Two. Richland Two had a lot of practices in place, but as you look, not only has the board changed in Richland District Two, the demographic is of our students, and I'm very, very concerned, once again, about our African-American boys, who may be very aggressive and assertive sometimes, just like other races. But, these folks who are carrying these weapons, do they have the skill set? Do they have the training to interact with our African-American boys when something takes place that they feel are not in line with Richland School District Two? And at this time, I would like to bring a close to the discussion and vote on the motion that's on the table.
I think Ms. Mackey already had her hand. If I can please have Ms. Mackey?
I did, thank you. I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Davis. I know that we've had a robust discussion, and we've discussed this, I think board members have had opinions, and have discussed this before, before tonight as well. But, thank you, Dr. Davis, for taking the deep dive, for doing exactly what we asked you to do, and for trying to ensure additional measures and all are in place. I just wanted to acknowledge that what we asked you to do, that you've absolutely done what we've asked you to do, and I appreciate that. And respect the safety and security of all of our students, all of, all of our students. Thanks.
So I will respectfully withhold my, my additional comments, but I do just have one question. Are there any unintended consequences by leaving, possessing weapons, because Mr. Shad brought up the idea of weapons potentially being something more than just firearms? Because Mr. Shad brought up the idea of weapons potentially being something more than just firearms. So I just want to make sure we don't have an unintended consequence from removing this related to things other than firearms. Am I making sense?
So if, if the board is requesting to move possessing weapons on district property altogether, or not having them on any school property, that would include any, any weapon? So that mean we could discipline based on the policy?
So right now, is Dr., if we left this policy with Dr. Davis, would he get things for scissors longer than four inches? Or he would get all of those things?
Yes, that is, that is true. That is inclusive of that.
Okay. That's fine. We got a motion, so I want to vote on the motion. We may need to have another amendment that addresses maybe what we mean by weapons and firearms potentially to clear that up. But we do have a motion on the table, so, in a second. So at this time, I'd like to take the vote on that motion.
Let me just make sure that I'm clear on that motion that's up there because I don't see anything mentioned that no school employee will be allowed to carry a weapon. Am I missing that?
I think that's implied in the first part of that component. So the, yeah, weapon, I think we may need to come back later and define weapons. What we potentially, or.
Then that's correct. Thank you.
Is our vote, are, are, of all the votes been cast?
Who's missing?
Because that was my concern. My concern was that weapons mean, could be in anything. It could be a box cutter, it could be anything. If we mean firearms, it should be firearms, which is why I voted against it. If we mean firearms, then we should say firearms.
Okay.
But it wasn't my motion.
All right, so the motion passes five, yes, one, no, one abstention. So with that, we have removed that clause at the end that was in parentheses on that policy.
Mr. Manning, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What do you do to enforce it for just firearms? A box cutter is considered a weapon. If someone has, that can be considered a weapon. How can you enforce the policy to make sure that you are addressing only firearms? Because firearms are the issue at hand.
We would need a motion to change the, to change the remaining component, possessing weapons on district property. Either completely remove that and reword it, or a motion to further define weapons. But we need another motion to address it. Dr. Holmes?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Before we, before we do all of that, I think that we might be reading a little bit into the policy. I think that everybody knows if a person is on the campus and they are working on the campus, they're going to have a box cutter. I think that that's not where we should be leaning with this, that every little thing has to be listed. Or if you're working in a shop or something like that, you're going to have a saw. So that could be considered a weapon. But you're, you're an employee, but that's part of what your material job is to do. So I think maybe we just need to state if it's not, if it's, if it's in connection with the job that you're doing, then that doesn't apply to this particular policy. But if you have that and it does not apply to the job that you have directly at hand, instead of going down a list, because inadvertently you're going to miss something on a list. So I think that it would be more prudent to just say it has to be the possession of anything that could be potentially considered a weapon, such as a box cutter. If it relates to your job title or what you do or some project that you're doing in the classroom with your students, then that's not, that doesn't fall in the realm of being a weapon. I think that that would be more prudent than trying to do a list with every little piece of equipment on it.
So Dr. Holmes, do you have a specific motion? Or do you want to let our lawyer, who usually gives us a fight?
I'm gonna let somebody, y'all know what I'm saying. But Jamie Shad, I need you to word that.
Our lawyers who know how to write stuff in weird ways.
Well.
It's fine.
Okay. Ms. Chair, Dr. Holmes, I would totally agree with you. But all you have to do with the statement you made is to change a person who's employed with a box cutter with a student with a box cutter. And that has come before this board before. And we addressed it. And we, it's, it's very difficult to look into the intent of the person who had it at the time that they were found with that. And unfortunately, some items have dual uses. And it just depends on.
But I think, where I was going, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Shad. But I think where I was going with this is, if you have a box cutter at school and your job is the custodian at school, you need a box cutter. That is in connection with your job. So any, so now anybody can flip out, I'm not saying that. But that if it's in connection with your job, you have the right to have those particular things and don't fall under this particular policy. So my, I would want it to be worded in some way is the connection with your, your job in the district. That, or if you're in a shop, you're going to have saws, you're going to have twos. They, all those can be considered weapons. So we can't, I don't think we need to, again, I don't think we need to get into listing things because you're going to inadvertently miss something. But if, I think we need to hit more on the fact that if it's in connection with your position or your job or, or a class activity, then it should be allowed. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Manning.
Yeah, Ms. Mackey.
Just to respond, I'm, I'm the, the last person up here who wants to nitpick policies at all. I think the intent of our policies should be clear, and I agree with Dr. Holmes. The intent of your policy is what needs to be enforced, not nitpicking or, or unduly splicing policies. I'm an extreme opponent of that. I don't think we should list anything. What I will ask is to Dr. Davis, the policy, the motion that passed just now, Dr. Davis, are you, are your hands tied? Are you able to do what you need to do to enforce the policy as the intent is? So that employees are not carrying guns if they're not supposed to be? Are your hands tied? Are you able to do what you need to do with regard to the intent behind the policy? But I don't believe in listing anything or being, or just nitpicking a policy. I don't believe in that. I agree with you, Dr. Holmes, with, with that regard. Are your hands tied? Are you able to enforce what you need to force, enforce as the policy is listed? Which is about firearms. That was, that was the basic premise.
Yeah. I'm confident that we're able to enforce the policy. An administrative rule will be created to, to identify, to identify what weapons or what constitutes weapons as relates to employees to, for the specificity of the policy.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Okay, thank you. All right, board members, other questions or comments? Thank you. Cut right through that. All right, next on our agenda, item 12, old business action requested. By the way, thank you, staff, for your work. Well, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, if you remember at our special call board meeting we brought before you for first reading the following policies that are listed on the old business action requested that are from 12.1 down to 12.28. I would like to request a motion, if at all possible, to pull item 12.25 IMB, the policy that, the policy that discusses the content of controversial content, to give school administration, district administration, an opportunity to take this policy before FAC for some discussion and then to bring back for an additional, additional reading. But I am asking for the remainder of the policies to be approved as edited by the board on the special call board meeting at our last meeting.
Can I have, all right, Dr. Davis, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Dr. Holmes?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that IMB go under the Teacher Faculty Advisory Board for revision.
Okay, we have a motion to move that. Second, seconded by Ms. Agostini. Is there any discussion? If we can have the vote at this time? No, that's the right one. Motion passes seven zero. Okay, if I can have another motion related to item 12, old business action requested?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Agostini?
I move to approve policy revision IJOB slash IJOC, community partners, school volunteers.
All right, I have a motion to approve policy revision IJOB, IJOC. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there any discussion? We'll take the vote at this time. Does everybody cast their vote? Okay, no, motion passes seven zero. If I can have another motion? Mr. Shad?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve policy revision IHD, adult community education.
Motion's been made by Mr. Shad. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
For the record, I just want to state that I will not be supporting this because I am not in favor of adding the word entrepreneurial. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Ms. Mackey? Okay, that's all right. That's all right, man. I just see the red light. All right, any other discussion? Let's have the vote at this time. Seven oh. More, I, I don't know if we have maybe some that we can agree on or some that we can't, so that we can do some sort of grouping here, just to help speed. Because we got a lot of motions. This is going to take forever to go through all these individually. Don't want to suppress any discussion. But if there's a way that we can sort of have somebody say, pull some out that we want to discuss and at least group the other ones, can we find a way to do that?
Mr. Chair, I misvoted on that one.
Oh, you did?
So I, I apologize. I put a yes and I, no.
Well, I think I'm.
Can I, yeah, it still passes, but can I, for the record, have my vote changed or is it too late?
No, we can't. We'd have to go back and actually redo the whole, which would bring up the whole, like. I'm sorry. But if we can, if somebody can make a motion with maybe some that we can pull out so that we can at least group them.
Mr. Manning, I actually was going to make the next, the next motion if no one else did. And just do it two or three at a time. Two or three at a, just do two or three at a time. And if anyone has any discussion, that's what it's for. But that'll be the pleasure of, either the motion will pass or it will not.
Well, no, I just have a comment about, I like the fact that you're giving us the option that if there is one that we want pulled out, to pull it out. And if there's nothing to be pulled out, let's lump it. So I guess the question would be if anyone has anything that they want pulled out. And then if not, let's lump it. And I think that would just show respect to everyone on the board. But I don't have any that I need to have pulled out. I just have comments once we get to a few of them.
Okay, so you just have comments. So you're okay if we did the group? And does anybody else have something they want pulled out?
Mr. Chair, I would like policy IJ pulled out.
Okay. IJ?
And IKE.
Okay, those two?
Yes, please.
Okay, if I can have somebody make a motion, please, with those two policies pulled out to approve the others?
Mr. Manning?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mackey?
I move to approve policy revisions to IIA, to policy IHCF, to policy IJJ, to policy IJKA, policy IJL, policy IJN, DAA. Nope, it's DAA. Policy IJN, DB, policy IJOA, policy IJOA. Why did I say that twice? I'm sorry, I apologize. Policy IJOB, to rescind. Policy IJOC, to rescind. Policy IKAA, policy IKAB, policy IKACA, policy IC, policy IKD, policy IKF, policy IL, policy ILB, policy ILBB, policy IMB, policy IMD.
Yeah, we pulled IMB.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's fine.
Strike IMB, you did, you did. Strike IMB, please. I misspoke. So I'm striking IMB for my motion.
Okay.
Policy IMBD, policy IMDB, and policy IMG. So that would be everything with the exception of IJ, IKE, and IMB. Thank you.
Okay, were you, were you able to get all that to me? Okay, you're better than me. All right, if we can just check the motion to make sure it's accurate. So that should be, I'm sorry, can I get a second, please? I apologize. Thank you. Dr. Caution Parker, seconded. So in other words, it should be all the policies except for the first two and IJ, IKE, and IMB. All the other policies should be represented there. Do we have any discussion? No, it's not. IJ, we pulled, that's right. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Just a question for policy 12.9.
Oops, my apologies, my apologies. And I wanted to go back and maybe Dr. Davis, you can answer this question for me. I know when we're talking about construction and providing monies for small and minority businesses, have we put something in place for media centers to employ or to purchase African-American books in our media center? Have we put a dollar amount of that? Because I know that many of our schools, especially at the elementary level, they don't have a lot of African-American books. And I don't want to just say African-American, Hispanic, all our cultures. Do we have money in place that we require media specialists to have a certain portion or amount of materials there to make sure that everyone feels inclusive? And I think Dr. Grant could probably help you out with that, too. But have we considered that?
It's a good question. We have not identified a specific or earmarked as a specific amount of the budget for book purchases. However, we have had the conversation and have implemented a plan where we are reviewing all of our library books. And had an actual, had a meeting with our media specialists so that they understand that we are to purchase books that represent the populations in which they serve in their schools. This also is going into the classrooms as we are looking at classroom libraries, also in materials that are being purchased, that are being displayed around schools when it comes to posters and things like that. So that those things are a reflection of the students in the schools and the students within the community that they serve. But we have not set aside a specific dollar amount. But we have set aside, or we have implemented a plan where schools, principals, librarian, media specialists understand that we are asking or we are telling them that we want to purchase materials that represent the populations in which they serve. So yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes, ma'am.
With regard to the motion, you've done a wonderful job, Mrs. Sherman. Except for where it says IJOB, you have IKE in front of it. And I think it should be IJOA. Everything else is accurate. Bless you.
Yeah, thank you. I do not.
Where it says IJ, I don't see IJOA. Am I overlooking it? I see IKE and then IJOB. I think you may have typed a K instead of a J. That's all, just the one thing. Where it says IJOB, you want to have IJOA in front of it. It will, okay, no worries. Thank you so much. Yes, sir. Okay.
I was going to say, yeah, we, Ms. Mackey, IJK, you did not list that one, if you could please, if you meant to, to address IJK in your list of. could please, if you meant to, to address I J K in your list of policies.
I meant to include I J K in my list of policies.
And Dr. Caution Parker, I, is the person who seconded, I want to make sure you're okay with that change. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Because I think that was the intent, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I was counting.
Yeah, thank you.
But, yes, Dr. Elkins Johnson.
I do have discussion for one other policy, and that is policy 12.12, and that's I J O A, school-sponsored field studies. And just a question, I'm okay with the policy, but just have a question. Wanted to know what is in place for students who may have a behavior concern and teachers or the school may want to leave them behind unless they have a parent who can go on the field studies with them? Are we trying to put something in place where if parents cannot go, that we have a school personnel to be able to go so the student will not miss out on an educational opportunity? And I'm asking this question because as a former teacher myself, I know sometimes you just felt like little Johnny just did not know how to behave and you needed an adult with them. But not all times can parents do that, especially parents who work hourly and not salary. So, do we have something in place that if Lily Johnny's mom cannot attend, that that person will not have to stay back from a field study, that we can provide that additional adult, whether it's through a volunteer or a grandparent or district office staff, so they don't miss out on the educational opportunity in moment?
The, the field studies are, will be an extension of the classroom. And so, any student that has not been deemed to stay behind because of some sort of consequence for behavior, that student will be allowed to attend. And if, and need be, additional support will be given in order to properly supervise that student or any student for that matter. I think the teachers pretty much do a fantastic job of doing that. There's always usually on the field study, you've been a former elementary teacher, I'm sure there's always a group with that teacher that it may not be his teacher, but she or he may assist with little Baron who refuses to follow the teacher's directions and who connects better with one other teacher or someone in the building who does a phenomenal job of going on. But yes, ma'am, we, we have procedures in place to ensure that a student gets an opportunity to participate.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions or comments from board members? Okay. And Ms. Mackey, your motion is accurate. We will take the vote at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Thank you.
Who didn't get a vote? Did we get everybody? Who's that? Me? You, me? It says we didn't vote. I voted. So, do I need to change, hit change vote?
You should get another pop-up. You should have gotten a separate pop-up.
Can I just raise my hand?
Yeah, me too.
Perfect. Motion passes seven zero. All right, if I can now have a motion for policy I J?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
I would like to move to remove the second bullet point statement on page two under, additionally, parents, guardians must receive notice and an opportunity to opt a student out of participation in the following. And the second bullet point that I would like to be removed is any non-emergency invasive physical exam or screening required as a condition of attendance administered by the school or its agents and not necessary to protect the immediate health and safety of a student except for hearing, vision, or scoliosis screenings or any physical exam or screening permitted or required under the law. And then to include below that, further, parents, guardians must receive notice and provide written consent for a student to participate in the following and add that line of any non-emergency.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. And again, I want to be clear that we are voting to make that amendment to the policy. And then after this, if we want additional amendments, we make that, then we will vote on the policy itself, either with or without that amendment. Does that make sense to everybody?
I'm a little confused here.
Me too, yeah.
She.
Okay.
You don't have to go ahead and repeat it all of it, but exactly what paragraph?
So, on page two, what I'd like to see done, if you look at the additionally, parents, guardians must receive, you see that part? The second bullet point, I would like that withdrawn. And so, it'll include the first two bullet points. And then below that, add the line, further, parents, guardians must receive notice and provide written consent. I would like written consent for that second bullet.
Okay.
For the non-emergency physical, invasive physical exam. I want the second bullet point to stand alone under, further, parents, guardians must receive notice and provide written consent for a student to participate in the following. And then have that second bullet point follow underneath that. What I would like is written consent when we are doing a non-emergency physical examination. This is about performing a survey. This is not about providing emergency medical care.
Mr. Manning, does there have to be a second to the motion or first to have discussion?
There, there was a second. Dr. Elkins Johnson, seconded.
Dr. Davis, it seems to me that, I think you've addressed this question before with regard to the bullet point. I think you, you were asked a question before if students will have any sort of invasive procedures, and I think you were saying that that was a no. Am I, am I?
That's correct.
I'm pretty sure we discussed this previously, did we not?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second. Do we have any further discussion on the proposed amendment?
Well, I, I have questions on this because I want to make it clear or make sure that I'm understanding this properly. I read this as an instructional resources and materials. This is about surveys. I, I want to, and perhaps Ms. Gregory can clarify that for us, but is this about providing medical care for a student or this is about students participating in surveys? Gregory, press your button.
It says survey slash activity, so it's, it delineates both.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Okay, as I'm understanding, Ms. Gregory and Dr. Davis, the section that Ms. Agostini is talking about that has the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight bullet points, which requires written parental consent. Those are items that are funded in whole or in part by the U.S. Department of Education. As I understand it, she has made a motion to move the second bullet point in the second section, which is the notice and opportunity to opt out, to move that to that top part, which may not, no?
No, that's not correct. I want it to be removed from there.
You want a what?
I want it removed from the second portion of the additionally. And I want a line after you do the second part with the two bullet points, the any other protected information survey, that would stay there. And the activities involving collection, disclosure, or use of personal information, this is all survey information. This is collecting data. This is not about providing medical care, the policy.
Where are you moving the second bullet point to?
I, I want it to be moved underneath. I want a new sentence put in that said, further, it's very similar to the additionally one, but instead of opting out, I want provided written consent. So, just below those two bullet points that we just mentioned, you've got the additionally, two bullet points, then further, parents, guardians must receive notice and provide written consent for a student to participate in the following.
So, you want to create a third section and put that bullet, second?
Correct. I want a section below that because if we're doing a non-emergency invasive examination, I want written consent. And.
And it does say under written parental consent, it talks about survey, analysis, or evaluation. It only in that other section says survey slash activities, but you're right, it does pertain to surveys.
Yes, it's not for providing any type of medical care to a student.
Ms. Agostini.
Wait, 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 hold on. This second bullet point?
Ms. Chair, can I, can I get just a clerical issue real quick and then come back? Just hold on.
Sure.
To Mika, do you, do you understand what you even put on the screen? Because it's kind of a lengthy request. You got it? Because if not, I was gonna ask Ms. Agostini to maybe give you a paper copy that you could write, and that might help clarify what we're looking to do as well if we see it on the screen. And then, Mr. Shad, I'm gonna let you finish now, sorry to interrupt you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
Well, I just wanted to, I inquired about this with the P P R A, and I also sent it up to FERPA, and I share this information. But just to define, physical, an invasive physical examination, any medical examination that involves the exposure of private body parts or any act during such examination that includes incision, insertion, or injection into the body, but does not include a hearing, vision, or scoliosis screening. If we're going to do any type of that, type of procedure, exam on our students, I would like written consent. I do not want the parent to have to be able to opt out. I want them to be very clear to know what in fact we are doing on their student.
Right, so I, I see the motion, but I don't think that's inclusive of, that was part of what you wanted, but there's, further. Is that everything you asked for? If you can look at it.
Okay, so after the further, that would be the addition, added part, remove the language on page two of that. But then I want that language put under the further, parents, guardians must provide written consent for non-emergency procedures. And then, or no?
May I ask a clarifying question while we're?
Yes, ma'am.
Trying to, Ms. Mackey? Do some Scrivener's work there. As the policy stands now, is there anything that would, that would, that would be done to violate a student, violate may be a strong word, without the parents' consent? I'm trying to understand. Is there an opt-out? And that might be Dr. Davis or Ms. Gregory question. It's because I'm, the intent of the policy is what we're trying to pass. We're trying to pass policies with regard to intent. The intent of the policy, is there anything in the policy right now that would require anything, any type of examination of a child without a parent's? You know, help me understand the intent.
Not to my knowledge, and I also checked with Dawn McAdams to, to check.
The non-emergency, as I read it, first, I do have questions of whether or not the comma should be out, the non-emergency, is, is it any non-emergency invasive physical exam? Is that two things or one thing? I think it's one thing, a non-emergency invasive physical exam, not two separate things. I could be wrong. Or screening required as a condition of attendance administered by the school or its agent and not necessary to protect the immediate health, safety of students. So, these exams, if it's not a condition of, you can't do it as, as a condition of attendance. So, it's a situation if a student came in and you were trying to determine whether or not a student could attend school, you could not perform a non-emergency invasive exam or screening as a condition of the student being in attendance.
As it's written now.
As it's written, as it's written now. So, this was related to attendance of the student in school administered by the school agent or not necessary to protect the immediate health and safety of a student, except for hearing, vision, or scoliosis screening. So, you, you can do those things, but you can't do any other thing without contacting a parent and giving them an opportunity to opt out for the purpose of the student attending school.
And those are the required screenings?
Right. So, if a student comes in and you may think he or she may have a contagious condition, but that condition may be hidden, you could not go into asking them to remove their clothes and things like that for the purpose of attendance. While at school, you have to call the parent and get a parent consent to be able to do that. So, you could not do it without the consent of the parent, whether it's in writing or not. You can't act until you get verbal confirmation from that parent, and they, then they have the ability to say, no, do not provide, or no, do not do that.
That's my understanding. Thank you, Dr. Davis, for the clarification.
Okay, thank you. And I think Tamika's got the, the written portion. She's updating the motion now to make sure we're all very clear as to what the motion is. Is there any discussion while we're waiting on that to get done?
Mr. Chair, I'll just share a part of what I received back. We provide you with some general guidance below concerning the P P R A. With regard to your specific question about certain physical examinations or screenings, P P R A requires that parents be notified of any upcoming examinations that meet the criteria in the law and be provided an opportunity to opt out, opt their child out participating. It is not an active written consent, but rather an opt-out. However, the local school district is required to develop and adopt policies in conjunction with parents regarding certain matters, including administration of examinations and screenings. The local policy could require active consent, but P P R A does not. And just from being from Michigan, there was a well-known physician who used to be part of the U S O C, treated gymnast, did several non-invasive physical examinations on young women. And Michigan State University is paying a lot of money now to a lot of young women because of, and they were given consent, he was given consent, and parents were in the room. So, I would just like to see us, if we are going to do any type of invasive physical exam, that's not an emergency, to get written consent.
Okay. So, this correct now? Okay, so now it's written as given by Ms. Agostini, it's been seconded.
And to be clear, as it states now, just to make sure that I understand, as it states now, parents are advised of any kind of procedure that you explained, Dr. Davis. And I appreciate the example that Ms. Agostini gave, which is that if someone wants to do harm, they're gonna do that regardless because they had to give consent there. So, we pray that it wouldn't happen.
Yes, as is written, we have to give consent from the parent to do any type of examination that's a non-emergency for the purpose of attendance. We could not deny a student the right to attend school or anything like that as relates to. So, this is, again, is about the attendance. But yes, we have to call and get consent from the parent to do any type of, any type of examination in that matter.
Thank you for the clarification.
Are there any other questions or comments? Dr. Holmes?
Okay, before I, I'm so confused, but let me make sure I'm clear. So, as it stands right now, we still have to get consent, whether we change this or not, correct?
If we change it, what will be required is that we will need written consent. So, I don't know how long written consent will take in some situations. Now, in most situations, if a student, again, again, this policy pertains to attendance only, so permitting a student from attending school. As stated in the, and stated in what Ms. Agostini read, the organization basically mirrors exactly what I'm writing, what our policy states. They're, they're, but they are also saying that the board or local school board saying that the board or local school boards can make any additions or make it as restrictive as possible, or restrict it as much as they like to or make any changes. That's totally up to the local board. But as far as the law is concerned, the way it's written, this mirrors exactly what the organization that she quoted states. So our policy is in line with the organization.
Okay, so it's in line. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll take the vote at this time. Motion fails two to five.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Mr. Shad.
I move that we approve the policy revision, IJ.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Shad, seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes five to two. I now need a motion for policy IKE.
Mr. Manning.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the policy revisions to IKE, promotion and retention of students.
All right, motions were made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, Dr. Elkins Johnson.
I guess my question is, I wanted to make some revisions to this. So do I have to allow this motion to fail first before, but I can also make my comment, correct?
Go ahead and make your comment. Yeah, she's the comment.
Okay. My comment was, if you go back, can you guys open? Okay, it's open. With that policy, it states that the principal will be responsible for, wait, the principal will be responsible for the decision to promote or retain a student in grades K through eight. I wanted that since we say that we are in partnerships with parents, and at that age and grade level, there are no credits. So I wanted the parents to be a part of this and insert that the principal alone with the parent would be responsible for retaining, making that decision to retain a student.
Okay. So we have that comment. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Questions? Yes, ma'am.
My concern is that teachers don't seem to be stated anywhere in this policy. And I would like to at least to have the teachers participated. I appreciated that a teacher actually did reach out to all of us and ask that this might go to the faculty advisory. And that would have been my wish for the, to send it to faculty advisory to get their input on this policy.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I omitted teachers, but I had that on my paper. So I want it to be principals, teachers, along with parents will make that decision. Thank you.
Okay. I think my comment would be, and I think Ms. Mackey said this multiple times, that even though it may not be in the policy, I think the spirit of, the principal should do that in line with all the information given to them. But I understand your request. Dr. Davis, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. We can take the vote at this time unless there's further discussion. Ms. Mackey?
The motion fails, but we can come back with a different motion.
That's right. Ms. Mackey?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Okay.
I think that, I know that we have previous policies that talk about partnerships in the school, and that our schools are partnering with teachers, and that we are partnering with parents. So I'm trying to figure how this differs, if we have a policy that, I don't have it in front of me, I have to look that up. But I know that we have policy with regard to there being a partnership in place between our principals and our teachers and our parents. So I don't know, I'm not sure if we're going to go through each policy to make sure we add the verbiage of parents and teachers, or having a policy that talks about the education of students being a partnership already.
Dr. Davis?
This comment.
I welcome, if that's the will of the board after the vote, to take this back for input. However, I will caution just one or two emails from a teacher regarding their interest to participate in making that decision. Often is a very contentious place to be for a teacher. If that teacher recommends that that student is retained in some classes, that teacher may be the only teacher that teaches that particular grade level if the class is small, which will mean that student will be placed back in that teacher's class. I don't think that teacher will probably be the one who will want that student. Or if the parent, in many cases, some parents wanted the student retained when the student has actually demonstrated proficiency to move on, but they're fighting to keep the student in the grade level for various reasons. Some reasons have actually been for athletic purposes, to keep them in an age group where they have an ability to position themselves to perform with a younger group of students. I do not make that statement lightly and say that that's something that all parents would do, but those are situations that would, could arise when it comes to the retention or the promotion of a student. I will also say that it is our expectation, and it is a practice of our district, and it's not in policy, but teachers are active participants in the student's promotion and retention, because they're the ones that's giving the direct instruction and the grading. So the principal is basing the decision mostly on the student's performance in the teacher's classroom. And so if the student is not performing up to grade level, the teacher has reflected that accurately in his or her grading and comments as relates to that. I have not seen an example where teachers have not been given an opportunity to give their expertise about the performance of that student, and taken into consideration many mitigating circumstances like adverse childhood experiences that the student may have, excessive absences, student could have some issues at home, various reasons that may delay the student's performance at that time. But teachers are often given an opportunity to weigh in on that, particularly they are at the very forefront of that as it relates to also partnering with parents and appropriately communicating with the parents on how the student is performing over the course of 180 instructional days.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Button.
Press your button, Ms. Gregory.
There is a rule, admin rule that goes with this, and it spells out nine weeks by nine weeks, what the follow-up is with communication, parent conferences, developing a plan. None of that can happen without participation with teachers. And you can also see that these policies, or this policy, has been revised several times over recent years, and teachers and administrators have been involved in that process.
Dr. Holmes?
I was getting ready to say, I think I concur with Dr. Davis on this. I do see where I think parents should be involved in the decision along with the principal. I think that that's, that parents should be involved in that. But so far as a teacher's point of view, I agree with Dr. Davis, because if the teacher has been doing what they're, the grading has been there, the child has failed or whatever, that's already on the books, the testing has indicated that. I would not want to be the teacher that had to make that decision, and then, like Dr. Davis said, the child turn around and be right back in my classroom next year, and the parent is looking at you like you're the reason that their child failed. I think administratively wise, the only thing that administrator is going to do, as Dr. Davis said, is do the collective work to gather the specifics about why they're saying the child needs to fail in the first place, and that's why you're the principal of the school. But I don't think that the principal alone should make that decision without the parent. So I would think that it would be a decision, a collective decision based upon what's already been submitted by the teacher to the principal, that the principal and the parent make that decision. That's my take on that.
Dr. Davis?
Someone, and thank you, Dr. Holmes, someone would have to have final
Right.
approval. Because in many of these cases, it's, in several cases, there are disagreements, whether the teacher, the parent wants the student promoted, and the principal says he or she should be retained based off of performance, or vice versa, the parent wants the student retained, and the principal says he or she should be promoted based off of their performance. There's no, no evidence to support why the student should be retained. So somewhere in this policy, if that is the case, if parents are a part of the decision-making process, the final decision has to rest with someone in case
Principal.
There is a disagreement.
Ms. Shad?
Thank you. It does appear on page three that there is a process, there's a multidisciplinary team. I'm assuming this is made up of our instructional staff. They make recommendations to the principal, the principal is the final say-so, and then the parent, who should have already been brought along the way, first nine weeks, second, third, they then have a right to appeal that final decision that's made. So it's final really in quotes, because it could be overturned. But they still, so therefore, it sounds like there's still input by all partners in this child's academic progress. So like Dr. Davis said, it could happen vice versa. But it does sound like the parent does have a voice. But I could imagine a husband and wife still in the same household, and they don't agree. That happens often.
Yeah.
And then what do you do? If we're saying we want the parents' input in the final decision-making, when both parents have two totally different decisions, then what do we do? We put it into a vote? Or we, you know, I don't know. It's fraught with issues, I think. But it looks like the policy is as it is currently in place, and it looks like it has been in place for a while, addresses those concerns.
And I can
Mr.?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Mackey, and then Ms. Agostini.
I can speak. I know from my own personal experience as a parent of children in District Two, that I know that we had parent conferences on a regular basis. If you can't be there, then you've got emails from teachers, you have notes. I know there are so many opportunities. No situation, no person, no process is infallible. Nothing is perfect. But I know that I've talked to parents who have had to make decisions with regard to retention of their students. And there was a, there was a pretty weighty process there. There's no such thing as just sending home a report card. The principal says that, you know, you've been retained. I know that the process is pretty heavy with family. I'm saying family because it may not be, you know, a mother or father, with family engagement and the teacher engagement from my experiences that I've had in District Two.
All right. I'm going to do Ms. Agostini, and I'm going to requestfully ask that unless we really have a strong comment after that, that we take the vote. Ms. Agostini?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want to assume that the teacher's being included in the multidisciplinary team of school professionals. I would like to see the teacher somewhere actively put into this policy. So I'm going to stand with sending it to, postponing the vote, and sending it to faculty advisory for their input.
Okay. In response to that, Dr. Davis and Ms. Gregory, who makes up the multidisciplinary team?
Teachers, administrators, teachers that work with that child.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yes, you would have to have.
All right, we'll take the vote at this time. The motion is to pass, the policy is written.
Yes.
That was what the motion was and seconded.
Is that we seconded?
Yeah. I know we forgot. Motion passes five to two. We will now move on.
Right.
What's that?
Oh.
Yes, ma'am. Motion passes five to two. All right. Next on our agenda, we have item 13 dot one, draft agenda for the October 29th meeting. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Chair, members of board, we will have our October 29th board meeting here at R2I2, beginning with executive session at 5:30, and coming to public session at 6:30. In executive session, we will cover items related to student admission requests into adult ed, student appeals. We'll have our inspirational moment, the approval of our agenda, consent, agenda approval, public participation, and legislative update. We'll vote on items of student appeals and student admission requests, and also have items, if needed, for discussion in executive session. We'll have an update from Will Anderson on our capital improvement. We'll have old business action requested. We'll be asking for policy approval of EAG, the student transportation and private vehicles, as well as the approval of policies, GBEB, staff conduct. We'll have new business, no action requested, which will be the capital improvement update. We'll have a data snapshot as well as the report on state of Kate. We'll have future agenda items for the November 12th board meeting. As a reminder, November, we have one board meeting. And then we'll have public participation number two, if we need, needed, board superintendent comments, executive session number two, voting on executive session items, and number two, adjournment.
All right. Any discussion from board members? Okay, we'll move on then to item 14 dot one, approval of that agenda. If I can have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Mackey?
I move to approve the draft agenda for October 29th, 2019.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Mackey, seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll take the vote. Motion passes six to one. We have second public participation, of which no one signed up. We will now do item 16 dot one, board and superintendent comments. I'm going to start at my right with Ms. Agostini and move to my left.
Just very brief, thank you. They seem to all have laughed. Oh, Dr. Haas is still here. But thank you for all those that come and take advantage of our public participation. Have a great evening.
Ms. Mackey?
It's late. Bless y'all for being here, and happy National Principals Month, and everyone else who makes the wheels on the cog work in District Two. Bless y'all. Have a good evening.
Dr. Holmes?
I'd like to say thank you to everyone, all of the faculty, the staff, the community, the parents, and the people who sent their condolences to me on the passing of my mother. That's why I was not at the last meeting. But that, you all warmed my heart. I want you to know, I appreciated all the cards and the beautiful flowers. Tamika, I know you probably did that. They were gorgeous. Dr. Davis, I know you didn't pick that out. But I would, but I would, but I would be remiss with that, saying that meant so much to me, and I really am humbled, and I appreciate that. Also, I attended the USC Meet the New President of the College Forum that they had, and I liked him. I know that there's a big controversy about his appointment, but some of the things that he said were very valuable. I think that, you know, he will bring some different changes to the university. One thing he talked about was the need for diversity, not only with the students, but also with the faculty there. And that's aside from the controversy. I'm not going to state my opinion on how it went down, but it's here. So, but since he's here, I welcome him, and it was great to meet him. But besides that, again, thank you so much. It is late, and you all have a very good evening.
Thank you so much. Dr. Caution Parker?
For once, I have nothing to say, except good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Wanted to state that I had the opportunity to attend the Beyond the Basics School Board Workshop Conflict to Collaboration, and just a few takeaways that I have that I want to share. One thing was, respect the voice of others, even if you don't agree with them. Number two, do the right thing when or if you have to stand alone. Number three, maturity comes along with respect in how you treat everyone, not just the people you want to impress. And then four, it talked about true teamwork, and it gave us the seven steps for a competition model of true teamwork. And I want to just share that with you guys. And with this, the presenter, Ron Harvey, who did an excellent job, just asked us to focus on at least one of these for a week. So I'm going to share this with my teammates, and maybe we all can just choose one that we plan to focus on. And it's a seven-step co- And it's a seven-step confrontation model. Number one, start on a positive note when you want to talk with someone, even if you agree or disagree. Number two, address the problem, be specific about how you address that problem. Three, explain why it is a problem. Number four, give the other side a chance to speak with respect. Step five, validate and apologize if necessary. Six, come to a mutual resolution. And seven, end on a positive note. Thank you for your time this evening, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mr. Shad.
I don't have anything to add. Thank you all, y'all have a great night.
Thank you. Dr. Davis?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You done?
So the 2019 school report cards are now available for parents, employees, and community members, and others to visit at screportcards.com. The report cards are intended to provide parents, community members, and others with the tools to understand schools. As parents and community members review the report cards, we want you to know that Richland Two strives for continuous improvement. I applaud our teachers and instructional leaders for the use of data to improve teaching and learning with a sense of urgency. The work of our teachers, students, administrators, and parents continue to move Richland Two in the right direction along, along the pathway to premier. From 2018 to 2019, our district saw an increase in the number of schools receiving overall ratings of excellent and good, and a decrease in the average, below average, and unsatisfactory ratings. Now, we don't necessarily base the success of our schools on these ratings, but this is a report of information that was shared, and so these things can be fluid. But it is important to recognize the hard work of our teachers. First and foremost, the hard work of our students and of our parents, and, and the support of our community and the support of our board, because they allow us to utilize resources in order to make changes that are necessary for continuous improvement in our district. As stated earlier, as you know, this month is, of October is National Principals Month, and so we honor our principals for their outstanding leadership and an impact that they're making in our schools every day. Principals face it, face and overcome significant challenges daily, and I salute and honor them for the work, each and every one of them for their work. We also want to recognize Janine Tucker on her award, Round Top Elementary School Principal. Janine Tucker is receiving some extra special recognition this month for her work. We Lead Women in Educational Leadership honored her with the We Are Leading Award recently at a conference in North Carolina. So congratulations to Ms. Tucker. National Recognition for Inclusion goes to Bookman Road Elementary and Lake Carolina Elementary. Lower campus have been named Special Olympics Unified Champion Schools for their diversity and inclusion practices. Kelly Mill Med Pro is also in the news. Kelly Mill Med Pro Middle School is the only school in South Carolina to receive the Oob Tech Early Innovator's Grant. The Early Innovators Program gives, gives students access to high-quality STEM robotics and coding opportunities across the curriculum. And we also have several schools that will be recognized for Palmetto Gold and Silver, Silver. Eleven Richland Two schools have been named Palmetto Gold and Silver Awards for the academic achievement and closing the achievement gap during the 2018-2019 school year. The three schools earning Gold Awards are Forest Lake Elementary, Lake Carolina Elementary Upper Campus, and Blackwood Middle School. And on October 29th board meeting, we will recognize our Palmetto Gold and Silver, Silver schools for the past two years. And just a little bit of inspiration to leave you with to ponder, stand for the truth, the truth will never ally itself against falsehood. The truth must prevail in the end. And the important part of that is the truth, not my truth, not your truth, but the truth, always and must prevail in the end. I appreciate all that you all do to support this district. Thank you for your commitment each and every day. Thank you to our board for getting all the hard work and the heavy lifting done as relates to these policies. I don't take that, we don't take that lightly in our district, because your governance is so important, and to our teachers that stick with us each and every board meeting. Thank y'all for being here, and our staff, appreciate you, have a great day.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. You know, I think it's great we have an active board. Mr. Shad and I got to serve on the SC for Ed panel, we appreciate the opportunity to serve. I really appreciate Dr. Davis coming, being part of that. Dr. Davis, you, you're everywhere, all the time, you were the only superintendent that they came to that and provided some really valuable insight and input for our teachers that had a lot of questions. And so it was a great opportunity for us to really hear from teachers directly some of the, the concerns and issues, of which one was certainly planning time, which we heard from one of our teachers today about protecting that planning time and the importance of that, and it was great to hear that our district is not perfect, but we're certainly working on those efforts and continuing to improve on that. And, and we just know, all of us as board members are always engaged in different things, so I appreciate the activity. I don't want to just point out, Mr. Shad and I, all of us serve on these panels or in community events all the time, and I appreciate our board's effort to continue to be involved. There were some comments made earlier about the district's response to the Spring Valley incident. I will stand by the work that we have done to separate, or separate out district versus police activity, how we respond, our student discipline matrix. We've updated MOUs, we've had tons of community conversations about safety in our schools and that line between police and not, so I, I stand, and that's just a small portion of the work that's been done. We've continued to do de-escalation training in the district. There has been a lot of effort made to improve the safety of our students and, and define that line between law officers and between district personnel. Not saying we're perfect, but I think we have made a lot of progress. We continue, Dr. Elkins Johnson made that, mentioned it several times, this board, district administration continues to focus on improving in that area, and so I'm very proud of the work that we've done with that, continue to do with that. And with that, I will let y'all go home. So can I have a motion to please adjourn? Somebody? Motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Motion to make, do I have a second?
Second, second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimous, thank you.